Now, we are on.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is time to call the regularly scheduled or the special board meeting on April 28th to order. If everybody would mind standing and making the appropriate move and help me recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Just for the record, we had newly elected a board members who are going to be seated here shortly during the first part of the meeting. You guys really won't be participating because you haven't taken the oath yet, but you will be participating during the second part. Also, as a reminder for all board members, when we do the roll call, if you would please announce your name, well, say here, present, and how you are attending, whether it's remote or in person. So Hannah, if you're ready to do the roll call.
Yep. Andy Graham.
Here. Remotely in the building.
John Brotherton.
Here. Remote.
Phil Sweat.
Present, and I'm doing remote and in person at the meeting site.
Joan Fitzgerald.
She's acting.
Joe Robinson.
Here, attended remotely and at the meeting site.
Sandra Ulot.
Attending remotely.
And Mark Keys. He's absent.
Okay, so it looks like we have a quorum present, so therefore we can go on and legally conduct this meeting. Also too, for the record, I did a good part on the agenda here with the the newly elected board members who will be being seated a little bit later on. So if you would, would you please announce your name and how you are currently attending this meeting, just so we have for the record? We'll start off with Tyler.
Tyler Wilson, remotely.
Okay. Ms. Pettit?
Nikki Pettit, remote.
And I believe Moto, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Moto Johnson, remote.
Okay, and that's it, correct?
Yes.
All right, then. Also too, just remind the all the board members that since we are attending here remotely, that any action items that are brought before us, we will have to do in a roll call vote. So this brings us on to item number two, which is an action item, and it is a motion to approve the agenda as presented. There was one thing added that was number 11, which is energy-saving RFP contract. So if the board members had an opportunity to review the agenda, anybody have any questions, comments, concerns, or changes? If not, then would someone care to make the motion to approve the agenda as it presented?
I made the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, the motion was made by Mr. Robinson. Anyone care to second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Graham, and we'll need a roll call vote, please. Oh Hannah, you got your, you're on, you're on mute. There you go.
Sorry, sorry about that.
Sorry.
Graham.
Hi.
Fitzgerald.
She's absent.
Oh, sorry, Brotherton.
Hi.
Robinson.
Hi.
Keys.
He's absent.
Ulot.
Hi.
Sweat.
Hi. Okay, and it looks like it's unanimous, motion carries, and the agenda has been approved as amended. All right, this moves on to item number three. It's an action item. It's to approve what the board minutes for April 15th, 2021 board meeting. As everybody, as all the board members had a chance to, or an opportunity to review those minutes, if everything is correct, then would someone care to make a motion to approve the minutes for the April 15th board meeting as presented?
I'm moved.
Okay, Ms. Ulot made the motion to approve the board minutes, board meeting minutes from April 15th, 2021, and Mr. Brotherton seconded. So we'll need a roll call vote, please.
Brotherton.
Hi.
Graham.
Hi.
Ulot.
Hi.
Robinson.
Hi.
Sweat.
Hi. Okay, and it's unanimous, that motion carries, and those board meeting minutes have been approved. This moves us on to item number four. It's an action item, and it's we to accept the canvassing of the votes for our last election. Any board members have any comments, questions, or concerns? If not, then would someone care to make a motion to approve the canvas of the votes?
I made the motion to approve the canvassing of the votes from the April 6, 21 election.
Already, motion was made by Mr. Graham. Anyone care to second?
I seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Robinson, and so we will need a roll call vote, please.
Brotherton.
Hi.
Graham.
Hi.
Ulot.
No, in light of the fact that they haven't concluded the investigation of the county clerk's website, at least not that I can try to find out, I say no.
Okay. Robinson.
Hi.
Sweat.
Hi. Okay, so it looks like we have four in favor and one nay, correct? Okay, so then a majority rule, so therefore the canvassing of the votes has been accepted. And before we move on next, just like to say to all the board members, thank you very much. I had a good time serving with you guys and to the public. Thank you very much for allowing me to participate as a board member over these years. And to the new board members, good luck to you. God bless, and just remember, everything you do, make sure you do it with the majority of the people, board of students involved. Other than that, color me gone. See you guys later.
Hey, Bill, real quick, I'd like to thank all of you too. You guys, it's a thankless job being on a public board, and especially one that involves kids, and I'd like to thank everybody for everything that they've done for this district over their time. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Yes, take care. I'm out.
Well. Sandra, are you still with us? John and Joe, we gotta, we gotta elect a president pro tem with everybody that's on. It has to be out of us that are on the board right now.
Would you like for me to be the president, pro tem?
I don't care. One of, it has to be you, myself, or Joe, so it does not matter who wants to swear him in, so.
I'll volunteer to do that.
Okay. We probably need, Hannah, we probably need to make a motion to do that.
That's what I was gonna say. I believe that somebody has to make a motion actually to, to do that, and you.
Okay, I'll make the motion to nominate myself. How's that?
Awesome.
Thank you.
Okay. And so we need to go ahead. So Brotherton made it. Okay, so now we need to just do a roll call. I'm gonna go ahead and do that, okay?
Okay.
Brotherton.
Hi.
Mr. Wilson isn't here, or I'm sorry, Mitch isn't here. Graham.
Hi.
Tyler Wilson.
Hi.
Robinson.
Hannah, Hannah. They can't vote. It's only the current board. We haven't sworn anybody in yet, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just reading from my, okay, so Brotherton, Graham, and Robinson.
Yes.
We voted yes.
Yes, we all voted yes.
So Mr. Brotherton is the president pro tem.
He's the one swearing in, then we'll elect a president of the board after that.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, we ready? Is Mitch here yet?
He is in the building, and we are trying to get him online.
Okay, so should we wait till he gets here?
I think we should wait till he gets here. I think that'd be the right thing to do, don't you?
Like I said, he is here. We're just trying to, you know, technical difficulties.
He has to say the oath, so.
All right, I'm gonna turn my mute on and go see what I can do if I can help him out, okay?
Okay, thank you.
So you can just sit here. Let me do this. Hey, I'm, pardon my interruption. I've got Mitch Wilson here. He's gonna hop on my computer. I'm still in the room, kind of. So here he is.
Okay, do all, all the new members have their oath in front of them?
Yes.
Mitch, have you got your oath in front of you?
Nope. Was I supposed to print that off?
Hold on, let me bring it to you.
It was on the desk. It was on the desk.
We expect you memorizing.
Hey, hey, John, if I could offer suggestion to the new board members that they say it out loud, but it's gonna get really echoey that they mute themselves as they're reading it, so that way it doesn't go crazy. Maybe just you are reading it publicly.
That sounds like a good idea.
Michelle, would you concur with that? They don't have to be verbally heard as the muting, as they're reading, so it's not echoing over everybody.
Mine, yes, I agree. I like that.
Are we ready?
Hey, I have a question before we get started. I was just informed that, John, you nominated yourself as president pro tem. It has some come from one of the board members, is that right?
Well, I was just trying to expedite things. Yes, if you want, if you want to nominate me, Joe, please.
I'm nominating you as president pro tem.
Thank you, thank you. And it's unanimous, right?
Yeah, then I'll second that, for minute notes or.
Okay, so we ready now to do the oath? Are all four new board members ready?
Mr. Brotherton, I do not have a copy, but I will, I will follow your lead.
Okay.
If that's okay with you.
Then is that? President board members, is that okay?
That's fine. Just Moto, make sure as you follow, just say it out loud, but just make sure you're muted.
Moto, Moto is part of the agenda that you have.
Okay, that's what I was looking for.
It's within the agenda.
Okay, let me, let me find it then, because I do have that.
It's on page two. It's, should be what I, what I printed for you.
Okay, I do have page two.
Like all, almost all the way down to the bottom where it says Moto, Nikki, Mitch, and Tyler. It's right under that.
Okay, I looked earlier on this, and I did not see it. And again, it is not on this one for some reason. Now, when I, when I looked at it, when I looked at it on my phone, it's on my phone, but I'm actually using my my phone for, for, for the.
The, the print, on the printout, it's, it's in italics. So there's, there is only one agenda, so it's gotta be there somewhere. We'll have you follow along, I guess.
Yeah, okay, if that's okay.
Yeah. I think so.
Okay.
Okay, we ready for the oath?
Yes.
I will go slow. Line by line. Says I, and of course you'll put your name in. Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education, Rantool City Schools, in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois, to the best of my ability. I further swear or affirm that I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual, and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting. I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district. I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Rantool City Schools. I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law. I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community school to advance the vision of, vision for Rantool City School District. And I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision of the board, excuse me, fulfilling the vision the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the area of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. Again, thank you to the outgoing board members for their years of service. There will be a recognition at the regular board, regular May board meeting. This is now officially the start of the new board. Okay, now we're gonna have a roll call of the new board members. As your name is called for roll call, each board member must announce themselves and state themselves remotely or in person. Now, we've already done that. Mitch, if you could just do that, just say that you're present but remote, then we're all set.
Okay. Andy Graham.
Present and remote.
John, John Brotherton.
Present, remote.
Moto Johnson.
Present, remote.
Tyler Wilson.
Present, remote.
Joe Robinson.
Present, remote.
And Nikki Pettit.
Present, remote. Thank you.
You gotta get Mitch. Did you get Mitch?
Sorry, Mitch Wilson.
Mitch is muted, though. Can somebody get him? Tell him he's muted.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I thought I pressed the unmute button, but I guess I didn't press it hard enough. Mitch Wilson, present, remote.
Thank you, Mitch. Okay. I'm supposed to read this. There's a quorum of board members participating in the meeting, present at the meeting, and it's reflected in the minutes. Lastly, all votes must be conducted by roll call, so each board member vote on each issue can be identified and recorded. Okay, now my next part. Before elections can, before elections, can you discuss the way in which you'd like the members to vote, voice their votes? So we need to do that. Do you really want to go ahead and do it by roll call? I don't know of any other way. We can do it remotely. I think we'd have to do it that way, but I'm open.
Yeah, I think we just go I and nay for, I for yes, and nay for no, and, and then we'll, we'll get through it tonight that way, if everybody else is okay with that.
Any other board members?
I mean, you're gonna do it one at a time.
Yeah, one is I or nay.
For voting.
For voting, yes.
Yes.
I'm gonna do a roll call, correct? Okay. That helps me, thanks.
Okay, are we ready for nominations? Okay. It says election of board president. And this is presented by me. Nominations are now in order for the office of president. Do we have anybody who would like to nominate someone for president?
I would like to nominate, sorry about that. I didn't mean to cut in. I would like to nominate John Brotherton.
I nominate Andy Graham.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, if there are no further nominations, nominations for the office of president are closed. Okay. I think we'll go with Andy Graham first. And we'll have a roll call, Hannah, and we'll say either A or N.
All right, thank you. Andy Graham.
Hi.
John Brotherton.
Nay.
Joe Robinson.
Hi.
Mitch Wilson.
Hi.
Tyler Wilson.
Hi.
Nikki Pettit.
Hi.
Moto Johnson.
Nay.
Okay.
We, I, I don't think we need to vote. I think the vote's been taken, we have a majority. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm, yes, it's fine.
So Andy, congratulations, you're new board president.
Thank you.
You take over.
Okay. Okay, so what now are we on here? Okay, we're gonna do vice president next, is that correct? Anybody have any nominations for vice president?
I'll nominate Joe Robinson.
I nominate John Brotherton.
Can I ask a question in the middle of this? Is there any discussion about anything that we're voting on, or is we're just, these are the nominees, and then we're voting? That's how it is?
Do you have anything to discuss? Go ahead, Nikki. If you have anything you wanna say on those. I mean, yeah, you, after the nominations are made, you can have any kind of discussion that you would like.
Okay, I just didn't know how it worked. All right, thank you. That was my question.
So Hannah, are you gonna do the roll call?
Yes, I will. Can, I'm sorry. I, I just need to make sure I know who nominated who. I didn't catch it because I was writing, and it's hard to do on the, on the Zoom.
Tyler nominated Joe. And Moto nominated John.
Okay.
Hey, real quick, guys. So I just flipped the page here, and it says Hannah will now tally the votes, and it said blank receives X votes, and then blank receive X votes, if there's two people nominated. So do we still need to vote on John, since we voted on Andy? Because what if the five, the, he gets five, Andy gets five, then we gotta keep voting until somebody, is that how we gotta do it?
You go and vote for one person as.
Okay. Right, right, okay.
All right.
So Hannah, would you start with, take your pick, Joe or John first, please?
We'll start with Mr. Brotherton, because I wrote his name down first. Andy.
No. Nay.
John Brotherton.
Yes. Hi.
Joe Robinson.
Nay.
Mitch Wilson.
Hi.
Tyler Wilson.
Nay.
Nikki Pettit.
Nay.
And Moto Johnson.
Hi.
So we have one, two, three. Okay. So now we're gonna go to voting for Mr. Robinson. Andy Graham.
Hi.
John Brotherton.
Nay.
Joe Robinson.
Hi.
Mitch Wilson.
Nay.
Tyler Wilson.
Hi.
Nikki Pettit.
Hi.
And Moto Johnson.
Nay.
So it is four As and three Nays on that one.
Okay, so now moving on to item number six, the election of board secretary. Nominations are now open for board secretary. If anybody wanted to make a motion.
I make the motion to nominate John Brotherton.
Is there any other nominations? Okay, Hannah, there's no other nominations. There is no reason to vote, I guess, right? Correct, Michelle?
Correct.
Okay. John, you are now the secretary.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to number, item number seven. Michelle, do we have any public forum tonight?
No public forum tonight.
Okay. Item number eight is dates and location of regular meetings. We set this every year. I know there's been discussion about moving it up a little bit. I think our admin would ask, like it, if we moved it up a little bit. I'm not sure what everybody's work schedule is. My recommendation would be to move it up by 30 minutes to 6 o'clock. But if anybody else, that'd be difficult, and we can keep it at 6:30, that's fine. Also, I'm fine either way. It's open for discussion amongst you guys as board members. And to keep it on the third Thursdays of the month. Knowing that traditionally, we always move the November meeting because we're at the triple I convention, and we'll talk about that later in the meeting. And then spring break, we usually move it so that our admin can have a spring break and not have to come in on their spring break. So third Thursday of the month, at, at 6:00 or 6:30 or whatever, if we wanna move it to a different day or time, that is totally up to us.
We're gonna have to move it eventually anyway. Why not just set it now so that it doesn't fall on spring break or the, that convention?
Well, what we typically do is we typically do it a week in advance, or on the odd number of, if November has an odd number of weeks, five weeks, we move it to the last Thursday after Thanksgiving. We've done it both ways, I think, in the three years I've been on.
And keep in mind, it always will, so if it doesn't conflict in November, and if it conflicts in November and March, if you move it to a different week, it may conflict with something else, you know, Christmas, or, yeah, so just think about, let's think about that.
I'm all for moving up the time of the meeting to 6 o'clock.
I agree with that.
Does anybody else have any opinions on?
How long do the meetings normally last?
Don't ask that on your first meeting. Hopefully not very long. Hopefully not super long. We, we usually try to get in and out, but if there's lots of presentations or a lot of personnel issues or anything like that, I mean, they could go to nine or 10. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna lie to you, but we don't like to be there. We like to be done in, what, hour and a half, Michelle? Is that a good estimate? Hour and a half?
Probably an hour and a half would be ideal, yeah. I can tell you, probably the May meeting will be a little long. There's a lot of work to do to open up schools again, so May will probably not be a very good one to use to judge by.
Great, I don't speak yet much at these. We need to keep May starting at 6:30, please, because we do have the promotion ceremony that night directly before the board meeting.
Correct.
That was just, and I was also gonna say, Mr. Graham, that when we do. That was just, and I was also gonna say, Mr. Graham, that when we do the motion, we actually will put in there which Thursday in November we're gonna use. And which Thursday in March. Is that correct, Michelle?
Or it could be a Tuesday in November or a Tuesday in March.
Okay, so we wanna select the, the board meeting date for November and the board meeting date for March.
Right, right. And in November, I typically, I believe, we've done the Tuesday, Tuesday, you know, two days before. And in March, I believe we do the week before.
And so that would be November 16th is the Tuesday.
Yes.
And let me pop ahead to March. Uh, the Thursday, yeah, that'd be the 10th. That, that was, I didn't need to look at a calendar.
Everybody wants to keep it on a Thursday?
My only issue is in this, if we move it up to six, I shut down the barber shop at 5:30 and if I have 10 people walk in at 5:25, I'm gonna show up late. I'm cool with the six o'clock, I'm cool with 6:30, but just know if I have 10 people walk in at 5:25, I gotta get them done. And I'll be there as soon as possible.
That, that's my issue as well. I'm working remotely now, but when I go back to campus in the fall, I typically don't even make it home until 5:30 or a little bit, between 5:30 and six, just because of where my office is, getting to the parking garage and all of that. It will make it a little bit difficult.
Okay. Moto, do you have any opinion on it?
Um, no, I don't actually have too much of a problem six or 6:30. I do coach. But I, you know, by being a coach, I can actually reschedule, reschedule my practices to be a little shorter.
John, opinion either way, any, anyway, does it matter?
Nope.
Mitch anymore, Joe?
Open for either way, whichever helps the, the board members out. We've been going at 6:30 for all this time, but I like to move to six, but we don't have to. If it helps you guys' schedule, then we can go with whatever helps you guys.
Okay.
The only other option is the only other option is barber shops are closed on Monday.
Keep in mind, this is, you know, it's only once a month, too.
I know, I know.
Right. And, and the chances of 10 people walking into 5:25 are slim to none. But I was just bringing that up, that if it does, I will be happy to be late.
Well, it sounds like, it sounds like we're, we've got a couple of board members that have work issues and we do not wanna limit them or miss any, cause public forum is usually one of the first things. So we want you to make sure that everybody's here to, to hear from the public if we have people here, so.
I'd like to amend what I said. Sorry, don't mean to interrupt Andy, but, um, because I do work remotely now, it would be easier for me to say, I have to leave by this time. You're right, it's only one Thursday a month, to say, so I can get home to do whatever. That, that's also a possibility as well, so.
So, um, well, then that I, I don't care, uh, somebody, if, if somebody wants to make a motion, if not, I will to, and you guys pick six or 6:30, I'm fine either way, so. Uh, I think the third Thursday of the month is, is pretty good and we'll, we'll do the two recommendations from the admin, which was November 16th and March 10th, I believe, is that right?
Yes, and keep it, keep in mind, as a board, if you wanna revisit this, you're not stuck for the year with this. I mean, you can, you could come back later and change that. I mean, it's not always ideal, but to change the time and keep it the same day is probably not a big deal. But again, not every other month, but if you change it, you know, as, as a, as a group to a new time, at that time, you can always do that.
Okay. Well then, with that being said, I'll make the motion then that we keep it third Thursday at 6:30 with the two recommended dates from admin in March and November.
I second it.
Okay. Hannah, it's on you.
All right. Um. Graham?
Hi.
Pettit?
I, did you say six o'clock? I'm sorry, I had a hard time hearing you.
Six thirty, sorry.
Six thirty, okay.
I.
Brotherton?
Hi.
Tyler Wilson?
Hi.
Mitch Wilson?
Hi.
Robinson?
Hi.
Johnson?
Hi.
Okay, so we're good Hannah?
Yep, that's seven.
So number nine is committees and board representation. On your agenda, you should have, if nobody has that, I can read them off to you. Well, I'll just read them off. So we have some committees right now. The Rantle Township Advisory Board Committee is John Brotherton. And the advisory board is made up of members of the Board of Education from all the feeder schools that go into Rantle Township High School. And John can maybe fill you in a little bit more on that. Have you guys been meeting during COVID, John, or are you guys taking a little bit of break? Okay, so they're taking a little bit of break. The acceleration committee, I have been on that. The RIF joint committee has been John Brotherton. Social Equity Working Group, Nikki Pettit was a member of it. And I've already, I think she would like to stay a member of that. And Resolutions Chair. Once we determine who all is going to the triple I conference, we can pick that. I just have something to say on this. This is one thing that I think we need to revisit with admin as far as the president, vice president, I feel strongly about committees and I think we need to maybe add a couple committees. We talked about this. I would like, to me personally, I like to push these committees off for a, a couple of months, or a month to maybe, so I could, we could speak as a group a little bit more on this, cause I think committees are very important to this board. And I don't have a problem keeping everybody that's on there, on there. We can approve that tonight, but I think we need to add a few and I'd like to get some opinions from all the rest of you on those. If anybody has anything to comment on that?
I just have one question, Andy.
Yep.
The Rantle Township Advisory Board. Am I allowed to be a part of that since I'm a teacher at the high school, or is that something I have to pick a different board to be, or committee to be on?
The Rantle Township Advisory Board is open to the public. Is that, were you, but were you asking maybe as a conflict?
I don't know if it'd be a conflict of interest if I was on there and also being a teacher at Rantle Township High School, if that would be.
I, I don't, you know.
No.
That's a good question, but I don't see that as.
I, I don't know if we've ever had that issue come up before.
No.
Okay.
So, so my, my opinion is to, I, I, I don't think, since that committee's not meeting, I don't think we have any acceleration committee meetings coming up. I don't know of any. And then the social equity group, Nikki's already been a part of that group and we certainly wouldn't wanna take her away from that group and, and the work that they're doing. I would like to just push this off until May or June, Michelle, if we can, but if everybody wants to vote on it tonight, we can do that as well. I'm open for suggestions from anybody else.
I agree with exploring more committees, but keep it the current members that are on those committees there. That way we have a, a better opportunity to discuss the things that, you know, we wanna see changed and the things that we agree on or disagree on.
I agree with Joe and Andy and, and voting on those all at one time instead of doing some now and then having to go back and revisit and do some of those again later, just try to get down what we want and knock them out all at the same time.
I did forget to add that for the township, our, the Rantle Township Advisory Board, that we have had two members going. So the other one was Sandra, is that right, John? There were two of you? So there is, you know, there could be certainly two people for that one. So keeping that, that in mind as you're thinking about the committees at a future meeting.
And Michelle, I, that's why I had some interest in that committee, so that's why I was asking, like, being a teacher over there, is that a conflict of interest? So I, I wanted to double check on that.
I don't think that it would be.
All those meetings are public meetings. You could go to the meetings whether you're on that board or not, so.
Okay.
Okay, um, so yeah, so I'll make the motion to table this for right now and we'll get it on the agenda when it's can, when it's a little bit better, we'll talk with admin and all of you individually at, at times and we'll put a little bit more together. Anybody wanna second that opinion? I think Joe did already, maybe?
I second it.
Okay Hannah, do I need to rename the motion that we, we're tabling it? And do we have to roll call vote that or just move on?
I kind of rewrote the motion as, as you were doing it, so.
Okay. Michelle, do we have to, do we have to vote on that since we're remote?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, um, Pettit?
I.
Mitch Wilson?
Hi.
Johnson?
Hi.
Graham?
Hi.
Robinson? Brotherton?
Hi.
Tyler Wilson?
Hi.
Okay, number 10 is a personnel report. All of you should have received the personnel report. When we approve the personnel report, when you make a motion, you're including the stipulation that each individual is required to comply with all requirements for new hires as indicated in Illinois statutes and RCS board policy and procedures. So when you make that motion, you are adding that language into the motion, so. If anybody had any questions on the personnel report for new board members, we don't like to talk about personnel in open session. We would need to talk about that in closed session. So the personnel report is pretty short, because we just had a board meeting last week, so. If anybody wants to make that motion, we can move forward.
I make the motion to approve the personnel report as presented, including the stipulation that each individual is required to comply with all requirements for new hires as indicated by the Illinois statutes and RCS board policy and procedures.
Can I get a second from somebody, please?
I'll second that.
Okay, second by Mr. Tyler Wilson. Hannah, go ahead.
Eddie Robinson? Brotherton?
Hi.
Mitch Wilson?
Hi.
Johnson?
Hi.
Graham?
Hi.
Tyler Wilson?
Hi.
Pettit?
Hi.
Okay. Going on to item number 11, Michelle, or Jennifer X actually is presenting that, sorry.
That's okay. Good evening and congratulations to the new board members. Welcome. I'll make this quick, cause I know we're squeezing this in tonight. I'm bringing forward approval to move forward with an RFP, a request for proposal for getting a lighting proposal for energy conservation for our schools. This would be for replacing and retrofitting existing light fixtures with LED lights and installing the occupancy sensors across all of the buildings. It would come up to about a 74% savings for energy and would pay for itself within about three years. So we'd like to put the RFP out as soon as possible to hopefully get the work done this summer and it would be funded through our ARPS or fund funding, along with a grant through the village.
And it's, it's not for approval, it's just an info item tonight, because it, well, we don't have to have approval, but we also just didn't have this ready for the agenda on time, so it cannot be an action item. It can only be an info item and that's all we need it to be, is an info item.
Here we go.
Information, time for you to ask questions about that, but we will be bringing the RFP back to you for your approval.
Okay, thank you Jennifer and Michelle. Okay, item number 12, board and superintendent comments. I'll go first. Michelle has been emailing us about the triple I convention. I highly recommend for new board members that they go. I got a lot of, a lot of good things out of that my first year when I went. Please text Michelle or myself and I'll get it to Michelle if, if tonight, if you're attending yes or no, so she can move, plan on moving forward with that.
And so I need to know by May, by the May board meeting, I'm sorry.
Oh, May, right, okay.
Printed that, so.
Okay.
May 20.
Okay, well, I, I, I was trying to figure that out, like, I just read that, so, okay, by the May board meeting, decide. So that's a, and then a lot of people go up on Thursday night because the sessions start Friday midday usually. So a lot of people go up and get settled in and Thursday night's a good networking time with other board members from other districts. And you, you get to, you get to see a lot of different things and, and the expo hall is, is always good to walk around and and meet a lot of people we do business with on a yearly basis in the expo hall. So I would highly recommend that you guys go there and try to figure out if you're going up Thursday night and stay in for the duration or when you're coming home. The only thing else I have is, once again, I wanna congratulate all of you for being here. Don't take this job lightly. We're here to serve everybody in Rantle, but mainly, we're here to make sure our kids have a quality education and I, I look forward to working with each and every one of you over the next few years, so. Thank you for running and putting your name out there and, and I look forward to working with all of you. If anybody else has any comments or anything else, if not, we'll move on.
I also want to congratulate the new board members. I look forward to work with you and building a, a good working relationship with you.
Thank you.
Hey, I just had a quick question on that number 11 that Jennifer was talking about. So they're just trying to put it out to get bids? Is that what I'm understanding?
We, we will approve the RFP. They're just letting us know they're getting the RFP ready. We'll, we'll approve the RFP before it goes out.
So once we have the, once.
So I'm new to this. What, what does RFP stand for?
A request for proposals.
Okay, all right.
Kind of, kind of like a bid.
Gotcha.
Like a bidding process. So we're letting you know that we're gonna send out, we're kinda letting bids, sending out bids and then they'll bring back to you for approvals. The one that we recommend.
Yeah, you'll select, sorry, I misstated that, Michelle. You'll select a company off of your RFPs and we'll approve the company and the details of the work.
Gotcha, okay.
Good question.
Okay, does anybody else have anything else?
Yeah, Andy, I do have one thing. I'd like to also say congratulations to the new board members. And between now and the next meeting, I would like to meet with everybody just to give out new devices and give out passwords and logins for for the board packages and things like that.
That was Nikia, and Nikia is a lifesaver when it comes to these Zoom meetings, so Nikia is our IT director for all of you new ones. And he is a lifesaver. So yeah, so thanks Nikia.
Yep, thank you.
I will, I will send to you, to the board Nikia's phone number, cause the new board members won't have that and then you can call Nikia and set up a time that will work for you to come in and get the new device and be taught what to do.
Thank you.
Thanks, that's good.
And just, just for all of you, I, I, you guys should all have my phone number and it's, if not, it's on the website and I'm sure all your phone numbers will be on the website soon. So if you guys ever have any questions or comments, please feel free to call me and then I will make sure to get ahold of you guys at some point in time in the next month, just to talk to you a little bit, so. You'll be hearing from me sometime in the next four weeks as well. If there's no other comments, anybody, any other comments? Then I'll move on to the most exciting one of the night, is that's number 13, that's a motion for adjournment. Does anybody wanna make that?
I make the motion to adjourn.
I second it.
Tyler Wilson?
Hi.
Robinson?
Hi.
Mitch Wilson?
Hi.
Pettit?
I.
Johnson?
Hi.
Brotherton?
Hi.
Graham?
Hi.
All right, stop recording Nikia.
Yep.